In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by Norah Cam and may be recorded by other local media. If we could all rise and place the flag from the flagpole.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should have said that. So our first order of business is to recognize Eagle Scout Christine Tenny, who I know they're here.
I saw him.
He was in the hallway.
Yeah. Adam, thank you. Adam's our light guy. He's our door, doors, shut the doors.
He gathers the flock.
This is what happens when you become a regular. You get little duties.
It's nice to have a wobble, isn't it? It's nice to have a purpose.
You are our first order of business. We are here to recognize Eagle Scout Christine Tenny, who attained the rank of Eagle Scout on December 27, 2022. And she did a project that we would really like to hear about. Christine, if you don't mind, if you could come up to one of the microphones and just kind of, if you could just fill us in on what it is about to be an Eagle Scout, what you've had to do for your project.
Yeah, so Eagle Scout is the highest honor in voice scouting. I think, I think it requires a large project with a lot of paperwork, work as well as learning, like, there were 25 merit badges and basically learning all of the basic native scout skills. For my project, I went ahead and built dividing walls and shelves in the Union Cogitation, National, Union Cogitation's upper floor of their new storage shed. And because shelves were put down, down below, but there was nothing up, up top, so it was just piles and piles of stuff. So in the end, I built three walls, halls, one on basically like, like a stand to help hold some backwards up, like, that we used during the church's fair, as well as 12 shelves to store all the stuff on.
Did you do that, did you have help?
Yeah, so it was, I called in friends and family as well as my fellow scouts to help build it together. We raised, raised, or I think around $955, and there was about $130 left over that we gave back to church.
Wow, that's fantastic. That's such a great thing. So it's a, it's a great thing for you as an advancement for you, but it's also such a great thing for the community. Now, is that the church itself, or is that the food pantry? I hope that's the same.
Yeah, so the food pantry, as already said, they had a thing, so I did it for the church itself.
Okay.
Because when they gave the food pantry their old storage building, they, they built a brand new one. At a much better location.
Yeah, yeah, it used to be here and then. So do my colleagues have anything that they want to talk to? Oh, we have, I didn't know we had a slideshow. Oh, see that? Oh my God. Well, that, I'm glad you brought that because I didn't even imagine it was that big.
Yeah.
Wow.
This is one I was just trying to figure out. There's just one shelf on the ground, I feel like I was trying to figure out where they went. I had it in my mind.
How long did it take?
I did that all the time.
How long did it take to do it?
Um, so it took one and a half days to get everything built, take it out, built, and then put everything back away.
It's real.
That's it?
Yeah.
Are you available next weekend?
You should go into business.
Are you available next weekend? I have a few projects.
It's pretty good.
Culvert.
Culvert.
Well, that's before.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a project all by itself.
Yeah, trying to organize all that was not fun.
Wow.
There was no work.
Right, because nothing needed to be, well, maybe some of it was thrown away, but probably most of it had to just be put somewhere else.
Yeah, we donated a few books, Sabres, but that was about it.
Wow.
And the chairs got put back in the church because those weren't supposed to be there.
Okay. Wow.
How long did the project take from the beginning to the end? Not just the building, I mean, from like raising money, doing everything else?
From one, so like, once I got approval to actually build it, it took me two months in order to get everything, all the money raised, aced, and get the project fully built.
How'd you raise money?
Um, so I went around town asking local businesses for, if they would be able to, like, donate, donate anything. And I think it's Reich's, that pizza place in center of town.
Yeah.
Um, they, they gave me 30% off, off their large pizzas, so that, so I was beating my crew with that, saving money that way. And Morning Hands gave me $100 off their, their materials.
That's awesome.
Can you go back to, right there, so that's what the project, what the place looked like when she was done?
Yes. Both places had two high shelves, but that, but where the cups goes, user space, I gave them an extra, a third shelf, just because they needed the space.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, some of the shelves were reinforced cables that we used to use for the church fair, but we now have plastic cables that we use there at church, so they told me I could use the old tabletops, tops for the project.
Great.
I like to save costs, but, but most of it was just reinforced plywood, make the shelves.
So where did you get the knowledge to do this kind of work? Like, have you done it before?
Um, so I have volunteered on multiple Eagles Eagle projects, but most of it was me watching YouTube videos.
Ah, YouTube. You can learn anything. Anybody else?
That's great. That's a great job.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
I, I got as far as first class boy scout, and I considered trying to go Eagle. There was no way I was ever going to make Eagle. I mean, that, that, the hurdle was so high to even imagine, so I had to just drop out. But I, I respect anybody who gets to Eagle Scout. That's a really huge achievement.
Yeah, I'm one of the fastest Eagle Scouts because I did, because it takes around three years, but I took three and a half years because it took me like half a year to get started.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I respect a lot for being able to achieve that. I got stuck at signaling, you know, that, that whole thing, the flags. Could not get it down. Then I discovered girls was a more attractive option, so I went for that.
That's obvious, that's obvious.
Society.
It's fair.
Society code is not required, but it is an optional merit badge now, which I took it.
Oh, was it, did you really do it? Oh, good for you.
Yeah.
It wasn't optional, it wasn't optional for me. You had to do it, I just couldn't get through it.
Yes, but now that, now one of the required merit badges is citizenship of society, which is about how you incorporate people with disabilities into your community and how, and we also like how everyone is fully, everything happening. So people like will understand, man, people are different, effort. So this, we already had citizen community in a nation and world, so we do have people of immunity, but society teaches you how to actually act.
Yeah. Well, we have a Commission on Disabilities group, so you're welcome to come visit any time.
Yeah.
It's on Tuesday nights. Just look in the town calendar, love to have you.
Where are you going to school? I know we were trying to plan this so that we could meet you before you left.
Yes, um, so I am going to University of Massachusetts in Lowell, Lowell, but I start school there, here on July 5.
Wow.
So I'm doing a research program, so.
Excellent. What are you going to study?
Um, I'm studying industrial engineering.
Oh, we have a culvert. We have a culvert.
You want to work in a bridge?
You might graduate by this time.
She will, she will.
That's amazing, that's excellent. Great, good for you.
I plan on doing a five-year master program.
Excellent.
Excellent. So we do have a certificate of recognition, but before I read it, I just want to commend your parents sitting behind you. Um, I do know that your mom, I have seen for a year, how many years have you been involved in scouting?
20 years.
20 years. Wow. Yeah, very dedicated, and I know that this doesn't happen, but I support, you know, so just kudos to you also. Um, and I'm going to read, we have a certificate of recognition from the town of North Reading. Honored to present this certificate as an expression of its high regard to Christine Tenny upon her attaining the rank of Eagle Scout as a member of Scouts BSA and to extend a personal thank you for the community service work performed in achieving this honor. Would you like to, would, can we get a picture maybe?
Yeah, let's do that.
Congratulations.
Sounds like a gift to Reverend Hughes, right? 40 years.
Do we want to do it with the board?
Sure.
In the middle? I don't want to make you get up.
No, it's okay, I can cover her. No, this is, I can do this. Part of the, part of the PT, right?
Yeah.
We're going to call a quick reset so we can do a photo op.
Photo op.
I would like a photo op.
Quick resets. Madam Chair.
You want to do it?
I'm just saying.
Request progression to leave the meeting?
Yes.
Just make a little bit, two and one's left. A little one to the left, just a little bit.
Yes, I do.
You are.
I'm going to get a drink, so I'll take a little. Let's go just a little bit, okay?
Yeah.
There you go. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Oh, yes, that's true. Mr. Gilberto.
Very good.
Small things today, huh?
Yes, just so.
It is, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Intimidated.
I got a tea to handle.
I feel like I'm going to like get your wrath today.
What? All right. Next order of business is the Thomas Thompson Country Club, Pro Shop, and TCC Grill, two and two A Midiron Drive, a vote to approve change of manager.
Madam Chair, through you, we did receive an application to change manager for both of the licenses that are located at the Thompson Club. Board knows one is available in the larger restaurant building, and then the other is directly, I believe, Clubhouse?
Pro Shop.
Pro Shop, excuse me.
Pro Shop, Snatch Head.
So that's something that we addressed, a little proper licensing approach, probably six years ago, but I kind of created the two licenses. We know they've had some transition in management and they're here before us with the proposed new manager record.
What happened to Tim?
Tim?
Yeah, he usually, usually comes here on your behalf on a regular basis.
Oh, Tim Hooten. Tim Hooten, so he could have been here for, last Wednesday. He couldn't make it tonight.
Okay.
I know I've been, I mean, I've been at the club now for 14 years, so I said, I told him to take the night off, it was okay.
So are you the proposed new manager?
I am.
Okay, but you've been there for 14 years?
I have, so I started as a assistant golf professional, head golf professional, director of golf, and then in 17, I'm not sure if any of you guys were on at that point, I actually took over the food beverage position for two years, and then we hired another food beverage manager. I oversaw it for a few more years after that, and then the last two years, the two years I didn't, and I just stayed on as a director of golf, and I've recently taken over as a general manager at the club.
Okay.
So probably, thank you, I don't know, maybe, but thank you. No, I'm just kidding.
So this isn't new to you?
It is not new.
You've done it.
It's not new, I've overseen it, I've done it.
I was going to say, 14 years is a long apprenticeship.
I'm probably, you know, it's one of those where I put in my name just because long tenure there and working to a position that make it a little bit easier for you guys not to have to deal with us, hopefully, for a while.
Do my colleagues have any questions they want to ask or comments they want to make?
Just in relation to number of hours, I mean, you're there a lot of time anyway, but is this going to require more time on, on site?
Probably, but I mean, I mean, I'm onsite, 60 to 65 hours a week, probably would be my average. More seasonal position and, you know, I'll get, I'll oversee, I'll take, you know, oversight of both, instead of just being in golf or over, you know, whatever, but I'll just oversee both, so I'll be onsite 60 to 65 hours a week.
Just great, everything's in, everything is in the application, Madam Chair, that we normally would be asking for.
Right, so are we prepared to take a vote?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve a change of manager for the seasonal club, all alcohol license for Thompson Club Incorporated, TCC Grill, two Midiron Drive, from Brittany Wells to Chris Young.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second, but it says Manu Kelly, and does this have to be a vote?
We still have a hybrid.
So we have to, okay, Mr. Oliver?
I have it by custom voted, that way, it's only when somebody's voting.
When one of us is on that, right? So I can just go it all?
Or go in executive session, or executive session.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so on favor.
Hi. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Yeah, there is a second one.
Oh, there is? Nope, sit back down. Are you taking notes?
This could be the one that gets you.
That was close. Almost got away.
Not that easy.
Madam Chair.
Oh, there's a second. I thought you meant a second to the motion. I'm sorry, excuse me, Madam Chair. I, I was asking Mr. Gilberto if he was taking notes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a change of manager for the seasonal club wine and malt license for Thompson Club Incorporated, Pro Shop, two A Midiron Drive, from Brittany Wells to Chris Young.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Warner, a second by Mrs. Manu Kelly. Any discussion? On the favor?
Hi. Thank you very much.
Hopefully the rain lets up for you too.
Oh, brutal. Thank you guys.
It's raining again.
Good luck.
Who's Pat there today?
Wait, today's Monday, oh, today's Monday, it'd be tournament day.
Oh, that's, it looked like it was early, early morning, I drove by, it was already full.
So next order of business is liaison assignments. I think you all saw them in your packet. I apologize for the chicken scratch, I was trying to get it to Mr. Gilberto as quickly as I could, and I assumed it would be in better condition, but we will.
It was legible.
Okay, as long as you can read it, you know your assignments, and hopefully we can get that done more professionally and onto the website. And I guess committees and chairs would be notified of the liaison.
I think we reach out to them if there's any change.
If there's a change, you do it yourself.
Yeah, if there's a change, that's what I do, yeah.
Can I just have a comment?
Sure.
So the, the goal is for the, and we have a lot of committees, by the way.
We have a lot.
We have like over 50, I just count them, it's like a lot of committees.
And, and if there's, Mr. Gilberto went over that and did eliminate a few.
Yeah, well, that's kind of good. The goal is to combine the energy conservation committee and the recycling committee together into a sustainable committee. So that's like, let them get there, but that's kind of the goal.
You're going to work on that. And then also, I put you on three together because I'm assuming that those are all going to be combined, also transportation with MBTA and.
Well, that's, that's the other thing, is right now, I am the MBTA Advisory Board Rep and out of the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority person. The person who should be doing this is Lil. I mean, she knows it.
Yeah, I discussed that with my.
So that would be a change I would recommend that we do. It's fine to leave, I don't know what we have to go through to make that happen, but that should happen. Because she's, she knows it. Okay, so anyways, so just my two suggestions.
And that's the reason, so that's the reason they're on all of those.
Yeah, no, I get it. Yeah.
Yeah, so you can dump some a little. I get you.
Yeah, but right now, but right now, Lil is, Lil is not a voting, Lil goes to the meetings where she's not a voting person. I'm a voting person.
Energy, sustain, sustainability?
No, that, that and recycling.
Are going to be combined into one?
Their goal is to try to combine those together if they're up for it. That's kind of their, their kind of value.
That's up to the committee.
Well, I think they have to decide.
Is that for lack of getting enough members to volunteer?
No, no, it's because recycling, they've done so much, but they have more capacity doing it. And so the energy, a lot of towns actually, if you look around, they don't necessarily have recycling committees, they don't necessarily have energy conservation. They have sustainability committees that kind of look at the whole big picture, including these two aspects. So it's kind of progressive, it goes, that's where people are landing at this point. And they raised the issue, I didn't even raise the issue, they raised the issue.
They raised it.
Yeah, so I think it makes sense.
Mr. Warner, did you have something?
Madam Chair, through you, so whatever the original authority was for the committee, which I thought was a bylaw, but I don't see it in the bylaws, you're going to look at that, and there may need to be a modification of that, you know, either here at the select board level or a town meeting depending on the original authorization. We modified it at least once over the years to adjust the membership, I believe, so I think it's a vote of the select board.
It felt fairly casual to me for us to be able to do that. But on the MBTA thing and the EVA thing as a voting member, that's probably more formal to make the change.
So both, my understanding is both of the transit authorities, the default member, voting member on the board for Valley Regional Transit Authority and the advisory board for the MBTA is the chair of the select board. Chair of the select board has the ability to delegate that to somebody else to be a voting member, and as I understand it from the chair and from this conversation, it would be Ms. Harshman delegated to be a voting member. That doesn't preclude there being a liaison, like there is for other committees who are not voting as well.
I'm happy to be the liaison, yeah.
So if that's sort of everyone's, everyone's okay with that, we'll prepare the appropriate appointments that'll be signed.
Did you, did you understand, did you follow that?
I'm following. It's trending.
It's trending, Mrs. Manu Kelly.
I just, because this, this point was brought up even though it was completely unrelated to the, to the, the warrant article about the fact that we paid dues to the MBTA as a, you know, kind of, it had to do with the zoning that Danielle had worked on. And I think it was clear that there weren't, that people weren't in regular attendance at meetings or town meetings for sure, but I think it's important to get some of those answers out there. I believe a lot of people that were there might get the information through social media, that's where they're getting their updates and things, whether we agree that that's, you know, a great source of factual data or not, I think we have to start reaching out where some portions of our populations are reading what they would consider to be news, but I do think that's an important point, that we're not, we can't just say, we're no longer going to contribute to the MBTA, hey, we can't do that, but we also can't conjure up buses just because we give that money in. But I don't know if there's any ability for that committee to be able to get some type of transportation or what happened to it, but I'd like to know that too, if there's a way to figure that history out, you know.
And this is the stepping stone, we got this transportation committee, and we've got Lil who will be present, and she's getting to know the people in the MBTA, she's making contacts, which is a good thing for us. And, yeah, I'm hoping that.
Yeah, well, we need someone focused entirely on that, and that's what she's good at, so it's a perfect spot there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just think we should, some of those things, we should at least get information out there that explains, you know, it's, you know, it preceded a lot of our time, or it probably was an economic thing, but I don't know the answers to that, I just know from the time I've been here, there, there hasn't been MBTA here, and I don't think there, there was ever MBTA, but I don't know, I could be wrong.
It's a roll area, I think you'd be the, I don't.
Trolley's going through the Nathrading actually predate me, so it was a long time ago, a whole lot of time ago.
No, we always.
There were trolley's.
There were trolley's.
But it predated me.
Was there horse or bugger?
Right, yeah. It's like sound bites get out there, and then it, there's a, it goes, it runs with it, but we should really.
So I think that this was a solid thing for us to do, is get this committee going, have a point person that's making those contacts and, you know, hopefully we.
Put it all together.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a couple of issues here. One is the lack of transportation availability to the community, that's primary, but the other one, not so secondarily, is the impact of the law that was just passed, that's impacting us in relation to availability of funds and grants and the need for additional housing, which is being, let me say it, being regulated by, by the state in relation to the new statute that was just passed. You know, and I, and I think that was passed, and we didn't get a report from our legislators on that, and that's what's most disappointing, is that, you know, when it was finally passed and it was dropped on our lap, we weren't, we weren't well aware, and we didn't really weigh in as to the impact on our community. I mean, to the state, I don't know how we're ever going to comply. I don't know how we're ever going to be able to do it.
I think Danielle's really worked hard on that.
Oh, I know she has.
Just a bit.
Yeah, she's made a lot of progress with it.
But, but I think, you know, I think part of this discussion is, and I think our state legislator should come before us and just fill us in as to the genesis of the, of the law, whether they supported it or not, and then if they did support it, why, you know, and then how are they going to assist us in complying with it? Because we have an attorney general now that's basically said it's going to be strictly enforced, and there'll be punitive damages and levied against the communities that don't comply. And we've basically been set up to fail. Then again, I'm, I'm a strong advocate for affordable housing as anybody here, but we're very limited as to what we can do, and we're not on our line, you know, we're not on, we're not on the tracks.
Mr. Gilberto, I'm sure you have something to add to that, but I know that, I, I thought it was like, yeah.
You did, yes.
I know that I can add that, I know that Danielle has really been working hard on this, and I know that they have kind of backed off from all of their original, a lot of their original, I know that they have backed on a little bit.
Madam Chair, through you, so, I mean, I have had some conversations with Representative Jones, I've been in the room for a conversation with other legislators, you know, there's some information out there that, you know, a pretty strict interpretation took place in the power of the housing community development and the regulations that were developed under the law. There's a debate about whether some of those could be relaxed without having to go to legislature or not, but I can tell you that, you know, for North Reading, we do believe there's a path for us to comply with the zoning requirements that are needed. There is some work to be done, and we ask for funding. I think it's just really important to know that, you know, that right now, as I understand it, as we understand it, our requirements are to zone, not to construct, not to cause to be constructed. And I think we feel there is a way for us to comply with the zoning, but the reality of a significant number of additional housing units being constructed in North Reading is highly unlikely to be the case, I think. So that's where, sort of, the zoning is one thing, the actual construction is another. We've talked at length about the ability to actually support that construction, if it took place, we just don't have the infrastructure to support it, so. But, you know, I have a prize, Representative Jones, with the challenges that we've seen and kind of where we see things going, and I think, you know, our hope is to have some zoning by law amendments to be considered as soon as the October town meeting in order to, to try to comply, and if we're not able to, then we'll go back to the drawing board and find another way. But it is, it started as sort of, you're not going to get grant funding, and now it's obviously ramped up significantly.
Thank you.
I would just hope that we'll have some information long before, not, it's not that far away, the October town meeting, as to what's actually being proposed, and then how we, you know, again, zoning is easy, complying and getting it built is different, and, you know, how is that going to be measured and looked at by the state? Again, without sewage, it's not going to happen. It would not even come close to happening.
Mrs. Manu Kelly?
I just think that's another great example of how, I mean, we've been talking with Danielle
I would just hope that we'll have some information long before, not, it's not that far away, the October town meeting, as to what's actually being proposed. And then how we, you know, again, zoning is easy, complying and getting it built is different. And, you know, how is that going to be measured and looked at by the state? Again, without sewage, it's not going to happen. It would not even come close to happening.
Mrs. Minipelli?
I just think that's another great example of how, I mean, we've been talking with Danielle since prior to the legislation being implemented. And I think the perception is somehow that we caused that legislation, but the legislation is as a matter of policy, you didn't do it yourself, so we're taking that local control away from you. We're telling you, you have to do it. So all of those efforts have been made to comply with that. And like Mr. Gilberto said, and we've talked about this at a number of meetings way before it came to town meeting, but it seemed like it was suddenly a first instance. And, you know, they're not things brought to the floor of town meeting at a whim. It's stuff that we talk about ad nauseam here and that Danielle's been working on for years. And she came to us, explained it to us, asked us to provide her comments. We had a whole meeting where we told her about the difficulties we were going to have complying with it. It didn't make sense here because we don't have public transportation. We're a next door neighbor community. And I, I think she's been working so much on it that I, again, I feel like it's another example of where people are reading their news, I believe, is in some Facebook pages. And that might be an avenue for us to be, put in the messaging out there so that people understand it's not suddenly, you know, new people that show up in October. It's not something sudden, it's been in the works for years. We, that local control has been taken away. And the way that the wording of the language is, the legislation is, they could deny this specific money plus whatever else they determine can be denied. And it's so unclear that that means anything. So I think we should really start to really meet people where they're finding their information, with some of this information. So it's not like it's a surprise at the town meeting, you know, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Will you use on, assignments? All set? All right, public comment?
Legal bills.
Oh, I miss legal bills. I avoid bills when I get, legal bills, I'm sorry.
All right, Madam Chair, move to approve legal bills for April in the amount of $7,118.80. General being $6,893.80, labor at 225 for a total of $7,118.80.
Second?
Yep, tie.
May probably be them.
All right, we have a tiebreaker.
She's the attorney.
I have a motion by Mrs. Wallner and a second by Mrs. Minipelli. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Do I need to do that or all of you?
No, no, you can do it all.
All of you?
Aye.
Aye.
Secondary role as vice chair to tiebreak seconds.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, move to approve legal bills for May in the amount of $12,431.15. This follows, follows general $11,328.65, labor $1,103.50 for a total of $12,431.15.
Second.
Steve got that one.
A motion by Mr. Wallner, a second by Mr. O'Leary, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're onto public comment. Is there anybody?
We got the floor.
Anybody on Zoom?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right, then we will move on to minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the regular session minutes as written for the following dates. May 22nd, 2023, do you want me to continue on with the other one? There's like two more.
And the board could take it all at once if it would like.
Yeah, November 15th, 2021, and June 12th, 2023.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Wallner, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
TA report.
Okay, we were moving right along until we got to this.
We were promised, we were promised a quick one.
We've got a book tonight, Mr. Gilberto.
That's because the application's like 20 pages.
Madam Chair, through you, as I think most in the community are aware, construction of temporary traffic light at Park and Central Street began last week. Those of you who drove to the end session today saw that the, uh, the light fixtures are in fact hanging from the, uh, the wires. So things are moving quickly with Electric Light, our contractor. They're expected to be wired for electricity on Wednesday. Lights are anticipated to be put on flash mode in an effort to familiarize the community with their location. So I would anticipate it to be flashing red facing Central Street, flashing yellow facing Park Street. That's a pretty standard way to introduce a new light in a location. The closure of Chestnut Street and the full activation of the lights will occur within the next 10 days. We were originally looking to engage with closing the Chestnut Street area by the end of this week and then activating the lights at the same time. We may delay that slightly to allow for the community to get used to the lights with them in the flash mode, just awaiting confirmation from the Department of Transportation that they concur with that approach. I will tell you, I've been in touch with Representative Jones regarding the potential for state grant funding to help offset the $3-plus million cost of replacing the culvert. And we are looking closely at the state's municipal vulnerability program as a potential source of assistance. The replacement of the turf field is slated to begin Wednesday.
Just, just on that, has there been any other follow-up in relation to something other than a bridge? And as you say, replacing the culvert with a culvert or anything like that?
Intention at this point of the preliminary design was to replace with the bridge. I believe the public works director committed to come to a future meeting and have some discussion with regard to what that might look like. I spoke with the chair and we believe he can do that either at the July or August meeting. I'm still be in good shape in terms of the design process for that bridge. But I think that the initial feedback, and we did follow up with the engineer after the last select board discussion here on that topic. And, you know, I think their feeling was it was the solution that was most likely to be looked upon favorably from an environmental permitting standpoint. But that is something we'll have to talk further with them in the room and maybe answer any specific questions. Because they'll have better answers than I know with regard to.
I just wanted to see if the consensus of the board was still to look into that rather than the, the bridge. I mean, if it isn't, it isn't, but to me, it sort of made sense.
Yeah, I mean, for myself, I think if it's worth looking into, is there anybody? Mrs. Minipelli, have you?
Yeah, definitely.
You've got to think it towards what was initially.
So we'll schedule it any of the July or August company. The July meeting, as everyone knows, already having on its, um, the water rate capital plan hearing. And then I'll, we also see the license transfer application on Friday that will take up some time as well for these statements. So that'll be one that'll also be a few discussion, I'm sure. The replacement of the turf field is slated to begin on Wednesday, July 5th. It's anticipated to be included in the lay-in Tuesday, August 15th, which is a contractual endpoint. Parks and Recreation is using the facility this week and after which point it will probably be closed. I don't expect that the public will access the track just because of those concerns. I know that Parks and Recreation has been in conversation with youth and other athletic organizations regarding accommodations should the field not be open in time for their first year. I know youth football will begin that first week of August and there's been a lot of conversation. They will be relocated if needed. I think the, I don't want to hold up this whole promise, but the Parks and Recreation Director and he was obviously going to be able to meet that timeline. But the contractor does have until August 15th to finish the project. The town planner and I have been contacted by Metro Culinary Planning Council, inviting us to potentially join a group of communities seeking state Department of Energy Resources planning funds to explore potentially becoming part of the state green communities program. The town's participation was proposed as follows. North Reading seeking assistance in evaluating the advantages and disadvantages of the program for the town as well as the steps the town would need to take to become eligible for the program should the town decide to proceed with formal application. It's also seeking assistance preparing an application. So my vision happening is some initial review taking place and most likely to be brought to the select board as a follow-up to a previous conversation we talked about looking at that program where we can make a determination whether to proceed with the full-on application process or not, which would require some action from the town meeting as well. We do continue to seek grant funding to support transportation program and procedures in the state residence. Most recently, we're seeking community transit grant funding from the state and then attached a local attestation letter remembering the application. They also include a summary of state budget earmarks and funding for North Reading. Congress Committee of the House and Senate is now meeting to reconcile the differences between the two for budget. I did see that the House and Senate both approved a interim budget, so they may or not make the July 1st deadline for a new budget, but regardless, we do stand to look in pretty good shape from earmarks and for local aid funding. I will note, should the higher of the two numbers, which I believe is the Senate, for local aid available, it actually would potentially end up closing the gap in the budget plan based on the increase of the securitized program. Hoping that that's the case, to allow us to balance things about that a little bit more dramatic. The town planner, in conjunction with the Director of Public Works, submitted two applications to the state One Stop Mass Works Grant Program, one for the wastewater project and one for the Chestnut Street over replacement project. I attached copies of the two applications and Representative Jones has indicated a willingness to support the application. So thank you to all in the room, but for those who are not, you know, maybe watching at home, the state runs an infrastructure grant program called Mass Works or One Stop now, where they are seeking to provide communities assistance in infrastructure projects that either support economic development or housing development. And the town has benefited from the program in the past. We've got $3 million coming for water system improvements around the time we signed our municipal agreement with the town in handover. This would be an application submitted for similar funding, but for larger amounts of funding, potentially offset the cost of a project should the town decide that it wishes to proceed with the One Stop project. I will note, they'd like to see a specific number of jobs or housing units to be created by virtue of a project needing not have a specific private partner in mind at this point in time for the wastewater project. So that is something that, you know, could be an issue down the road, but we did talk with the grant program and they encouraged us to apply nonetheless. We did apply in 2016 without having a private partner. And while we were not awarded at that time, when we came back at a later point in time, I think we had a good foundation, a relationship with them in the world for the funding. So both of those applications have been submitted. They customarily provide us notice of awards in the fall. Usually they're great around the time of the October town meeting. I expect that that will be the case this year. And then finally, the Director of Public Services is developing accessibility and reasonable accommodation language that will be posted to the town website and be providing the votes of committees to include on their agenda as well, try to increase access for folks here in town. It's like a new work that's been done by the Commission on Disabilities to try to really get that information out there. And the Director of Public Services has been working on that, so we're coming. I know it was a lot, but I appreciate the opportunity to share that, thanks.
All right. Board member reports and board meeting business, Mr. O'Leary?
Well, first of all, I'd like to alert the community if they haven't already heard of the passing of Veronica Lee, longtime resident of North Reading, business person, wonderful lady, role model for family, community, generous, giving, selfless. I think just a wonderful, wonderful person. But she passed away Saturday and, you know, I called Pat and expressed my condolences. I have known Veronica virtually my whole life. So tremendous, tremendous loss to the community and a wish, peace and comfort to the family. And I'm talking with Pat, they are in peace and comfortable. So she's going to be sorely missed.
She was ninety-five.
Ninety-five, yeah, ninety-five, wonderful, wonderful lady.
And from what Pat said, she was never said, right, I can tell you that.
Yep, and she just, like he said, you know, ninety-five years old, had one bad week. He said, sign me up. But, you know, but just a tremendous role model for, for all of us, so. Believe in, we've been blessed to have her for so long, so, so has the community in town of North Reading. Other than that, Black Earth. I signed up for Black Earth and other people should do the same thing. If you got your, if you got your.
He's taken everybody.
If you got your trash bill, if you got your trash bill, like everybody did just a few weeks ago, including that was a flyer with an opportunity to sign up for composting through Black Earth. And what a fabulous program. And for the first.
Two hundred.
Two hundred people that sign up, you get a free bin. So we save you some money. But I would encourage everybody to do it, Destu and I doing it. And it's amazing how much you can compost. And if we have enough people sign up, the price of the program drops substantially. So everybody should take a look at it, check the website, because they know it's on the web, town website too. But it's a fabulous program. It's something that we should be encouraging everybody to do. And I applaud the recycling committee for their efforts and their persistence in pushing this program forward, long time coming. And I would encourage everybody to take a look at it and participate. And again, it doesn't have to be every week pickup, it can be a bi-weekly pickup depending upon what your usage is. It's a tremendous program and we should all be participating in it and encouraging our relatives and friends and neighbors to, to do so also. So it's, I did encourage one of my friends to do it. He said he did recycle the, the paper that it was on. Maybe he will take another look at it, you know? So it's like, he inserts, sometimes people don't necessarily read them. So he was, it had already gone, so I ran him off a copy and gave him another one. But really, it's a, it's a great program and everybody should be participating.
I have a question about that. Do you, I, I haven't been getting my paper and I don't know why. You've got your paper, but I don't know. But do you get the soil, any of the soil back?
Yeah, there's one, one bag that you get back in the spring. Yeah, you get one and then you can purchase more from them if you so desire. But yeah, you get one for being a participant. I forget how big the bag is, but it's a good thing. It's a good program and I know a lot of cities and towns do it, offer the program.
And it's easy, right? I mean.
Yeah, well, again, you got to think a little differently about things, but it's amazing what you can, what you can compost, what you recycle that, that way. So it certainly cuts down on the amount of waste that we're sending to the landfills, which is a direct correlation to what our costs are as a community. And aside from environmentally being the right thing to do, we should just retrain ourselves a bit.
And it takes the smelly stuff out of your garbage.
Yeah.
How much, how much of the subscription?
I think it was six months for bi-weekly was like $90 and I think $115 for a weekly pickup. So, and again, there's still room here for the first 200 to, to get a free bin, which is worth about, I don't know, $35, $40. And then it's not that difficult. And again, I'm, I'm a later, later arrival to this thing, but when, I think when they started the program, did the mailing, they only had about 60 people in the community participating. I think it's, I don't know if it succeeded 100 now or not.
Oh, it's over, it's like 140, 100.
Forty now, so it's really growing and that's good. So you still got room within the 200 to get the free, get the free bin. But if not, you make the contribution anyway and do it. But it's a, it's a good idea, it's a good thing.
Okay, anything else?
Just nice to see Mr. Wallner here with us, joining us. Glad you're men on the mend.
Sorry, I missed a town meeting. Sounded like a good one.
Yeah, we needed one more vote, you could have been in.
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, and again, I just did want to mention that I appreciate the people that did come out to town meeting and participate. We had well over 200 people. I'd still like to see more people participate, but, you know, it was a, a long evening and people hung in there and active participation in that's good. Regardless of where you stood on the issues.
Tendons is getting better.
Yeah, tendons is getting a little bit better, so. Other than that, thank you.
Mr. Wallner?
Okay, a few things. One is the Forest Committee, two things they're working on. One is we have our vendor from The Cape who's going to be doing the mapping of Swan Pond and then coming back with recommendations about how to make that more accessible and a lot of different fronts. So that's, that's, we're just trying to get the contract done with our new person in town here. Once that contract's done, where you started. So what you'll end up seeing is there'll be some sort of, besides the mapping, there'll be public outreach of getting people's input about how to, how to make the Swan Pond area more accessible through the forest and everything else like that. And the Forests Committee has taken this on, it's a little beyond their normal charter, but this is, they have great interest in making this happen. So we're, a relevant way to making that happen. The other thing we're doing with the Forest Committee as well is that by state regs or guidelines, whatever, you can't have more than three people on a Forest Committee. So what other towns have done is they've just renamed it to be a Tree Committee or something like that, so they can expand it to be more. So we're working with Bradley Jones to, Rep. Jones to potentially either challenge the state charter, which is only three, which doesn't look like it's been touched for 23 years, or let's just change the name of it and open up, because we're going to need more people to kind of work on this. We're in need of friends at the Swan Pond at some point as well, so that's one thing that's going on. Commission on Disability is working with the Transportation Committee to come up with a survey. The survey's already been drafted. It also has to be integrated with what Danielle's, Danielle's doing with the SETP thing that you voted on at town meeting, which is very, a very good audit of all the facilities in town. So instead of trying to duplicate efforts, we're trying to do complimentary type work. And potentially the transportation survey and the disability survey would go out with the census, so we could save some money on that as well. So that's kind of the thought at this point. But we're doing it in-house, we're not going, we're not going out. But we're doing it in-house, we're not going, we're not going out for consultation. We think we have enough expertise in-house and with a consult from the Social Work School at BU, we think we have enough forceps to do a really good survey, so we're working on that. Let's see, on Saturday, Reading did a Juneteenth celebration that was very well-attended. We had some people from North Reading there, the formal group, the Human Rights Group, had a booth there and was interacting with the guests that were there. It was very lively, very well-organized. Reading has actually hired a DEI director in their town, so this is her first foray into coming up with a public thing. They had food there, they had trucks, they had food trucks there, and they even had beer there. So that kind of made the event a little bit more celebratory. But that was a good event and it was nice to have some of our groups there representing it. And then Ms. Manapelli and I attended the Pride Ride yesterday, so that was fun. That's the third annual Pride Ride, and that was also very well-attended. We did the parade, we had nice support from the community as we went around with our cars decorated and throwing out candy and everything else like that. And then we gathered at the gazebo afterwards, it's the first time we'd done that, where they had a DJ and we had a drag queen who performed for us, and it was just a really good social event. It went on for about two hours. So it was a really good event, and again, nice to know that our town, you know, is taking the leadership of this one. You know, Reading does the Juneteenth, that's great, they're doing that. We're the only town around that I know that's doing something, says a Pride Parade. So, you know, good for us that we're doing that. It was a good, good show, and who knows, you might see, we posed with people, so we might end up on, probably already on social media, I don't know where else we'll end up. But it was a lot of fun and it was good, and I'm proud that our town embraces people of all different colors and types of persuasions. And last thing, I think you probably all saw, the Wakefield Vocational School, their Conservation Committee actually rejected their site plan. So of course it's gonna be appealed, it's going into a legal challenge, but the site plan that they picked has many problems according to the Conservation Committee, and the Wakefield Concom said, "No, you can't do that." They're gonna appeal it, but every time this happens, the cost goes up. So hopefully we don't see a problem with that site in the long run that we haven't already seen before. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one last thing, sorry. The people that, this is really important, I don't know how to find their names. The people that came to help me with my emergency, they were excellent and I've learned, yeah, the people were, sorry I didn't have this handy. Captain Dave Lee, Sean O'Brien, Adam Salemi, and Brian Latendre. They came to my rescue, and now I understand why, when you have an emergency, police come, many people come, because they had to lift me out from the bottom of the hill to get up to the top. And, you know, you wouldn't have known what you're facing until you got there. So I got, and I have to say Sean O'Brien was excellent. He took me all the way to the clinic, we talked all the way through, we talked a little business, we talked a little select court stuff, but we were talking the whole way and it was really good information. He stayed around, even after the trauma unit took me in, he stayed around and really wanted to know what happened to me afterwards, so. Really great team, and I was, from the time I cut myself to the time I was stitched up, you know, from a two-hour surgery, it all happened within four hours. I mean, the timeframe was very, quite very professional, and they didn't know who I was till I got in the ambulance, but then once I got in, you know, it was just really good to get a first look and see how good they really are, so I'm very proud of what they've done.
That was an extraordinary step that you took, to experience it.
Yeah, to just see what it's like. They may not replicate that in the future, but they did a really, really good job, so I might, might compliment them. Then I told them that, and I told Chief Stats as well, so he knows. That's it, thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt.
Again, the investment that we make, you know, it's necessary, it works, it's, they provide a tremendous service and I'm sorry you had to utilize it.
And you don't know it until you knew it.
You don't know it till you knew it.
Yeah. Well, thank you for recognizing us.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Manapelli?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we had, that was, yesterday, that was a really fun event, and it was fun to see all of the kids that were there having a blast, dancing, singing along. I mean, it helped that she sang the Little Mermaid song first, but it was a great, it was such a positive vibe, it was such a fun, uplifting, supportive energy there, which we need in these days and times where everyone's angry about everything all the time. It was just a great, fun day, fun thing to be able to attend yesterday, so that, congratulations go to Francine Coughlin and the Human Relations Commission for putting it all together. And I learned that she actually pays for the event out of her own pocket. Yes, so, but it's something she really feels very important to do for the community, and like you said, it's the third annual, so the parade's getting a little bit bigger, it's gonna be a little bit more support for it, so the more and more people learn about it and, you know, hear about it, probably get better attended. There were a couple of the new officers that were there, they were just interacting with everyone, the kids were enamored of them, it was just great to see. It was a good, it was just a good, fun experience. I wanted to ask you, is our town day, when are we having our town day? Does anyone know that date?
Yes.
Because I think we should probably start talking about that too, because we want vendors there, right, Mr. Gilberto?
The Chamber is trying to recruit vendors to attend, that is correct.
So hopefully that'll be put in the transcript and in social media, on Facebook and all these community pages, so we can solicit vendors for that.
Yes, and so the Chamber will be, I'm sure, increasing their advertising. We did meet with them for a planning meeting two weeks ago, with a number of department heads, and I think that we're in fairly good shape preparing for that. But it is Sunday, September 17th, from, I believe, 10 to 3.
Good. That's usually a great, fun time too, so if people could put that on there, save the date, put that on their calendar. Last year there was local, there weren't just, you know, different groups and businesses, but there were some people that sold things, you know, even local artisans can get a booth there, and it's great.
I haven't had it on my calendar.
Yeah, it was great, so it would be great to see more attendance at that too. That's a fun thing too for the town. And then my last thing, I kind of keep suggesting this, it's not quite coming clear in the minute, so I wanted to again ask it quite clearly. It's the wastewater committee, we're, we're kind of missing out not asking for volunteers to be on that committee. We should get some businesses along the sewer corridor, we should be getting some homeowners along the sewer corridor, put them on that committee so that they can carry out, you know, this sort of publicizing, publicizing how important this project is for the financial stability of the, of the town. And I, I keep saying that, but I guess what I'm asking my colleagues to consider is putting out a request for volunteers and actively actually recruiting from the businesses and from the homes along the route, so that we can have a team assembled. And if that, especially if that's gonna be entertained in October, I think we've been talking about, you know, we're kind of missing out on some time here, and it's already the end of June now, so it, it's still enough time for people to get some of this information out. We, we look at the budgets and we look at the financials until our eyes are bleeding from them. It doesn't quite carry across, again, I'm gonna go back to town meeting where someone's saying, "You can find it, just take it from another thing." We don't have jars of cash or wads of funds that we could just pick from one and the other. We also can't find it, all we're doing is taking it to a vote for all of us to vote on. And, and that's the type of thing that I think is a misunderstanding, that we could, we could at least try with this wastewater, if we could fill that wastewater committee and recruit people that, you know, that are all, all across the town, but primarily people on that route to just serve and take it to the streets. That, that's really what I mean. It's not coming across in the minutes away, I'm asking it, but I'd ask my colleagues to consider doing that. I, I'd like to see us hurry up and get, we know the people on the route, so hurry up and get people to serve on that committee, to get out there and talk about the importance of the project to the community.
And that's what you feel, that that would be their mission, is to talk about the plan that we have.
Oh, yeah, 100 percent. I, I believe that, yes, yeah.
I can piggyback on that, it's my turn.
Okay, you'll piggyback, okay.
Thank you, that's all. Thank you.
It's my turn.
Yes.
So, I'll touch on that point first. I do agree, I think from a timing perspective, well, between now and the July meeting, I think I'd like to work with the TA and other members of that wastewater committee on the scope of this, what we would put together, you know, because I think what I've noticed is that when we're all over the place, we like, you know, like what is the mission of the residents is to get together? And then I do think that August and especially September will be the biggest push, more just because we're, we're faced with like the vacation calendar right now, and that's the biggest issue. So now, that doesn't mean we don't try to push starting in August, but I think that July would be the, the most difficult, and I know we're, we're coming against it, but I don't, I think at this point, it's taking what we have and getting people on board to ask all their questions in a more intimate way, and then to, I don't wanna use the word sell, but more present to the community. It's pretty much what you're saying, I'm just repeating, but I, I do agree, I think it's just the timing where, I don't even think we disagree on the timing, I just think that we had to get past June and all that town meeting, I mean, between all that budget stuff, there was just no way, and now, I, I just feel like July is hard. But I do agree that, you know, you put it out there, would we publicize it the same way we publicize like, if you wanna join like a committee? Is that the same, is that how it works? I don't know.
Yeah, but we could, we could do it as a dedicated ad with the newspaper, really highlight.
I think that's a good idea.
And when we've done that, we've had success with it.
And then, and then that's what I think it would be, but I, I wanna, I just wanna make sure that we agree as a board on the scope of it, you know, before we advertise it, because that's the only thing, is that it, at this point, I mean, it would have to be, because of the timing, it would have to be, this is the plan, well, everyone knows the original, these are all the changes we made, we got to somewhere where it seems like it's balanced for the community, and now it's, if you agree with it, can you help us clarify it even more to the town? So I do agree with what you said.
Can I just, I, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I also, I really think our job to fill this committee, it's incumbent upon us to actively recruit, you know, people on that, people on that sewer line to, to serve on that.
Correct, but we still have to publicize it, right, as an issue of-
Yeah, but I don't think it should stop us from, from, because there's so many business owners we hear from that want to see this happen, and I think it's, I think it's important to have, so, they want it for their business, they want it to grow the business and, you know, things like that. But, but yes, I, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you on your turn, but-
And then the other thing is that we had, regarding the 40B, the 20L, Mr. Yebas Council asked for a update from the hearing officer, because I think at this point, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't we close to like a year from like the last hearing, and then we were told by January of this, of this year, we would have gotten an answer this past January, and as we all knew, I mean, we thought they were gonna blow past that, but we didn't think they were gonna blow past it by six months, but, and the only thing I can, the only thing I can put in from recollection of discussions, Mike, is, I mean, if the public's interested on why a delay, is that a new administration came to town during all of this, and I know that Governor Healy made it a point to say that they were reviewing every executive agent, I don't know how you put it, so I, I don't know if that's part of the delay, but that's the only thing I can think of of why, something that seemed, I don't wanna say clear-cut, but, so, but I believe, and the last thing as well, and correct me if I'm wrong, they are going to assemble council, both us and them, just at least give us a, a status?
It is some sort of a conference, it's gonna occur, I'm not sure whether a status can provide it or not, but the parties are gonna be gathered.
Maybe status is a bad word, just, you know, to get us all on the phone. So, and besides that, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I guess I would just piggyback on also on that committee that, I mean, if you're meeting in July, maybe just getting on that, like getting it out there, don't wait till August, you know, to get it out, out there, to get it going.
Oh, I didn't mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to wait till August to get it going. I'm just saying that August is, I think that even if we go to recruit, I think July might just be a little bit of a, a stretch to get people to even take the time, where I think August by then, you know, seems like everybody, we've only had some over two days with the humidity, everybody's already tired of it, so.
Right.
Give them a few more weeks. Sorry.
And I just wanted to add on to Mrs. Lee, that there is a week tomorrow night in 48.
Wednesday.
Oh, it's Wednesday, that's right.
Wednesday, Wake is Wednesday.
Wednesday night from 48, just so-
And the funeral's Thursday morning.
I know. I only have one thing, the CPC, Community Planning Commission, discussed the accessory dwelling unit proposal that they've been working on, I think for three years now. They, they have a new board now, they have a new member, so they took a consensus and it failed three to two. They are feeling like they don't, they're not gonna go forward with it. So, I said that I would take it to Mr. Gilberto, the Building Inspector, Jerry, and Town Council possibly to see next steps, where we go from, from there with that. So, probably on a future agenda, we might have it on there for a discussion, but just so that everybody knows that that happened.
So three to two, they're not in favor of accessory dwelling unit zoning by law change?
Correct.
So, are we playing a joint meeting with them to-
Not right now, so I, I wanted to discuss with Jerry, because this is really where it started, was with Jerry. Jerry came to the CPC saying, "These are happening, I can't do anything about it, how do I get some teeth?" The accessory dwelling unit was brought up, that's been discussed for, you know, three years now, so they're, they're kind of putting it back to Jerry and back to council, you know, like, like, let's see what, what next step, what other idea.
I think it's important for the community as a whole to embrace the idea, that it's a, it's a necessary step in order to keep people in the community, allow them to age in the community, allow families to stay together, as we just found out, articulated very clearly to the community, you know, the average taxpayer has over $10,000 a year, so the affordability of being able to stay in our community, age in our community is a real challenge. Then it maybe, so I, I think this board, again, at a future meeting, should take some sort of a position as to whether or not we're embracing the accessory dwelling unit-
In a future meeting, well, we will discuss that.
Not to just a future meeting, and then seek a, a meeting with the Planning Commission and ask them, ask the town planners, Community Planning Commission, to either spearhead the initiative, or explain to us why it's not a good idea, because I haven't heard a good reason not to do it.
Well, there was a lot of discussion.
Okay, yeah.
Quite a bit of discussion, it didn't happen just easily, so we actually were planning, we actually were going to do a, a meeting between all of us, but when the consensus failed, they just, they didn't see-
Well, the discussion still needs to be had, whether, whether they're in favor or not.
And another-
We still need-
No, we will, yeah.
So we shouldn't wait for them to be, if they're not gonna initiate it, that's fine, if they're not gonna support it, that's fine too, but I'd like to know why, why not.
He's supposed to be giving us a written recommendation on it.
But, but hold on, I would, I would just suggest like, because it involves the CPC, we definitely should wait to talk any further until it's an agenda, because like I just don't wanna get told that like we had this big discussion and none of it-
No, no, that's fine, no, no, they're a separate, independent elected body, and you know, they operate free and clear of us, but, but we, we should be dovetailing our, our interests and our desires, and there should be a, a discussion as to-
It will be, it will be.
When?
We'll, we'll get it, I, I wanted to first have a discussion with Jerry with-
It shouldn't be thrown back on, on the Building Inspector, he's just reacting to what's happening in the community and saying, "By the way, there isn't anything on the books yet, you know, I should-" yet, you know, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be approving these things, what are you gonna be doing about it, how should I react?" So it shouldn't be thrown back at the Building Inspector.
No, it's not being thrown back at the Building Inspector, it's a discussion...
So either they're gonna be allowed it, or they're not, you know, and right now, they're not.
Discussion to be had for next steps, and they have a little discussion going on. It will be discussed, but it's not on the agenda tonight.
Again, I have some feelings about it.
The agenda was already set before...
No, 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 but I mean, I have some strong feelings like everybody else, I'm sure. I think we need to clearly articulate what our feelings are to the Planning Commission and let them feed me what they think, and that's fine, you know, and if it's 3 to 2 in this split, let's hear the arguments. I mean, they've certainly looked at it and studied it far more than I have, you know, but, yeah, it, it's, it's important, and again, if you gotta meet the housing initiatives and needs and stuff like that, this is all part and parcel of that. It's all part of the, what we've talked about as far as the initiative that Rich has been heading up here.
So, yep, more to come.
Which we all embraced.
Madam Chair, did they, did they send that recommendation, their decision in writing, so that we could address it at our next meeting? Did they give us anything in writing on their reasoning or rationale?
I have not received anything from the legislature.
I mean, I know that, I know this is just your report of what they did, and I would expect that in writing from them to us, and then we can take it up from there, but I agree with Mr. O'Leary, it doesn't die, it doesn't die a death there because they decide they're not gonna support it, because that's been something we've left with them to consider for a long time, we've been waiting back for their input on it, so we should get their input in writing and move on with what...
And the administration needs to know how to react to permits that are being requested, or building which is taking place which is in violation of the current zoning bylaws.
Which is why I wanna have that discussion with the council, and, yeah, let's, let's get all of that, you know, what are we required, and what do we need to do next before we have...
Chair, I just wanna caution on one thing, we, the A D U discussion of the community is going to be a contentious one, and I feel that I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be the first to say that it has nothing to do of whether or not I support it, but SOR is the primary discussion, and we owe it to the community because we spent $3 million, so to me, if I feel that, personally, I'm not gonna be in favor on any extensive conversation on A D U that's gonna take up any kind of airtime, because the one thing I did hear, this was months ago, is that supposedly this was gonna be an October town meeting item, and if we're gonna have SOR an October town meeting, I see no way on earth that we can have an A D U battle on town floor with SOR. So I just caution the board, do, what I don't want is that we bring up A D U, we bring in the C P C, we have this great discussion, then we say, "Yeah, but guess what, we gotta get through SOR first, we'll see you next June." So like, I just wanna caution that I could see that happening, just that's, I, it's not a, either, I'm not in favor or against A D U, I haven't heard enough about it, but I can tell you that if it's gonna get in the way of, especially if we put together this committee, like, you know, SOR's a big thing, it's a $130 million project, and I feel like A D U's also seems to be a big deal, too, and I just don't think there's enough bandwidth to get that all done in the next three months. That's just my opinion.
You and Mr. Studo, we had a contentious debate over trying to increase the work-off amounts for seniors, one of our age-friendly initiatives. You can't prevent a contentious debate at town meetings.
No, but we can, but we said...
You can have it over anything, you can have it over hearing officers' reports.
I, I understand that.
That'll be a 45-minute debate, you know?
But Ms. Manapelli, I understand that, but this is something that's gonna require, in my opinion, public hearings, right, because if it's something that big, and I, I don't know how we're gonna ask the public to attend what was probably gonna be six, seven events on SOR between August and October, and by the way, can you come on down for five, you know, a couple more for the A D U? It just, am I...
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that October town meeting is where the A D U, I mean, obviously, it's not moving forward, if, if it's 3 to 2 on the Planning Commission, they're not gonna initiate an article for consideration.
Right.
You're not gonna see it in October, you know, but I'd like to have a clearer understanding as to the rationale, you know, the for and against, they've done a lot more looking at it than I have.
I agree, sorry, I just wanted to say, it's a timing thing, it's a timing.
I'm not looking, I'm not pushing for an October town meeting at this point, I guess I anticipated we might see one, but...
They promised us October.
Yeah, but, so...
Who promised?
Well, they can't promise something they have.
C P C. Yeah, until elections matter, absolutely.
Sure, no, so if that's, but that's, so if that's off the table, that's off the table, but that doesn't mean we, we turn a blind eye to the issue, we need to have some full-fledged discussion, this board and that board, as to really what direction we wanna see the community go in.
Okay.
And that's all, you know, I'm not looking to push them to do anything that they don't wanna do in October. And again, if the initiative has to be taken by somebody else, and that'll, that'll happen, that'll come to fruition.
You agree with that, Tim?
I, I think it's outrageous that they are pulling back on this, but I, I think they're totally missing the main point, which is that if you don't keep your seniors in town, you totally destroy your town.
I know, and we're not gonna discuss this right now, because it's not an agenda item, it was really just a board member report to let you know what happened, so we will discuss it further when it's on the agenda.
Well, when will we discuss it? Will it be on the July 17th?
I'm not promising that, but we've got a lot on there already, but possibly.
Well, you know, I mean, there's, there's urgency, there's an urgency to do this.
Well, not really, because it's not gonna make October.
No, it really does tie into the sewer project, because you're telling people who are already strapped to ante up, who are seniors, who are in fixed income, you're asking to ante up another $1,200 a year for a sewer project, one of the ways they can mitigate that, which is a very important thing, is to have A D U, so that way they can start to, to, they're overhousing their houses, this is a way for them to mitigate some of that expense, and we have to give them an A D U policy so that they can stay in their homes and not move out, because when people move out, they come in with families, when they come with the families, we already know the math, if you have one kid, it takes three households to bring him to school, if you have two kids, it takes five households, if you have three kids, it takes seven households. It's, it's just very clear math, and the A D U is a very critical part to having people have affordability to live in their house and stay in our town, and we need seniors in our town.
Okay, thank you.
This is outrageous and ridiculous, that C P C cannot see...
Well, it's not fair to say that, because if we make a decision, it's not, they've done a lot of work, and they...
No, they don't understand, they don't understand the rationale why we need it.
I don't think you should call them ridiculous.
Yeah, I, it's ridiculous, and it's, it's unacceptable.
Okay, so that is a board member report, and...
I am the board.
Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do. Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I have a...
I know, I'm not looking, I'm not gonna go anywhere, it's a little early, you know...
You're gonna hang out here for a while.
I have a second by Mr. Studo. All in favor?
I have to go, go read this book now.
What do you mean, what book?